And the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the last meeting, February 24. And I thought they were good.
Will we approve the minutes?
Second. So there's a motion by Harold, second by Mike to approve the minutes of February 24th. If all those are in favor.
Yes.
You. Next are department reports and. Dan, you want to go?
Of their business. Well, good evening. Fire Department remains relatively quiet.
You can come from Southern.
Michael, very well.
Oh, no.
All right. Little revision from the last meeting, we talked about the nine eleven memorial. I saw in the minutes that I had said six or seven thousand, we were going to raise to erect that monument. We've since met and recalculated. I was a little bit off, so we're now anticipating twenty thousand that we need to raise for funds for the nine eleven memorial. So that's our projected goal. We're going to begin fundraising today, starting in April. And we're not going to spend any funds from that until after probably the middle of the summer, so after the June war. But we do want to start doing a fundraising campaign. So we'll be coming out with that on social media or we're still working out those details. Just to give you a little highlight, I don't know if I shared it with you guys, but I will tonight. The monument is going to be, it's going to be shaped like the Pentagon for the base out of cord concrete. And then we're going to have two grand towers to imitate the two towers, the south and the north tower. Then the north tower that has the spire at the top. And then the piece of steel that we got from New York will go kind of at an angle on top of the two towers. And then we'll have lighting for the towers. We're going to have a flagpole, a twenty four foot flagpole that will be lit. And then a nice two wall, retaining wall with a little seating area. So if anybody wants to go sit and reflect on the event. And then somewhere near the front of the monument will be a separate grant stone that will have a plaque that will have the write-in on it. What the memorial is all about. Again, we're looking to dedicate that by December eleventh.
Where will it be?
So we're looking at the front left corner of the fire station. I talked a little bit with Linda about this, that we've got to check with code enforcement, the neighborhood property as far as the property lines and whatnot. If you're facing the front of the center station, it'd be that left side with a little walkway goes to that left door. Be just to the left of the walkway, right on top of the hill. That's why we have to have a little bit of a retaining wall on the backside of the slope.
Great.
It's coming together again, we'll be fundraising for that. Should be zero tax pay results for that.
Is it going to be ten feet from the property line?
It'd be close. The property line kind of goes at an angle from the.
As long as it's more than, as long as it's ten feet or more from the property line, you won't need a, you won't need to go to the Board of Appeals. It should be, it would be. Because I presume it's going to be fifty feet back from the road.
It'd be close.
There's only two numbers you have to worry about.
It's not a structure and we're making it so that it can be movable.
Actually, anything's a structure, believe it or not. It will be, you know, I don't think you can get away with that not being a structure.
I think it'll be like a shed. It's going to be very heavy, but the train will be able to.
I'm just saying, if you, if you make sure those two dimensions are met, you won't have to go to the Board of Appeals and there'll be less. Code enforcement issue.
Sure. Of course, you know, we did the property neighbor and market assessment as well. But as we get more into the planning phase, we'll definitely get measurements and whether we need to get a variance in on it. The second item I have is the building committee has been meeting. As you know, we've been kind of brainstorming. We had like a ten year goal to build a new fire station. And we met recently and I told several other fire departments that had built stations recently. Just to get a good idea of the projected costs of what their projects were. Trying to project what our needs are because we are upgrowing our stations, both of them. And we were thinking ten years out, we present a goal to build a new station. Or to build two new stations, you know, the one in the north is right on the corner of that intersection. It'd be nice to build one further back into that property. Or option two was combine the two stations into one, you know, that's certainly another possibility. So we started looking at it and we're finding that to renovate the current building downtown, you're going to spend almost a million dollars just, just to renovate that for the second floor or put an elevator. Same, take the money, you can build a whole new three day station and really spread out and make it large enough for our needs. So we think that renovating that's just not practical amount of money to take to do that. So we started looking at replacing the two stations as option one. And at a high cost, we're looking at like two point four million dollars. So I just took those figures, ran it through on a twenty year bond at three point two five percent. We'd be looking at about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar annual payment to build two new stations. So we'd still keep our presence in North Monmouth with our station up there, building a new two bay garage station up there. And build a new three bay garage down here. I would present to the town, the good place to put it would be between the PD and the town office because that's land you currently own. So you don't have to buy the land. It's nice wide open space and we could share the facility with either the PD or the town hall as far as a meeting room. Office or whatever. Share the parking space. It makes a lot of sense. And you could save a lot of money because now you could sell the two old stations, take those proceeds to offset that one four mil. Get below two million. And certainly, you know, if we could tap a little bit of that building fund, you know, might be able to, you know, reduce that even more from the sale of the Ketchikan School. So I'm just presenting this tonight as planting a seed that maybe we don't want to wait ten years because the interest rates are so good right now. That this might be a viable option to maybe get it sooner than later. So it's just something to consider. I was thinking about presenting at the CIP meeting, we'll have that to see, I don't know if you want to put that on that as a future plan. Certainly we could go back around too, but.
Is this one your committee is wants to recommend?
We also looked at doing a public safety building as another option. We're just finding you're going to double or triple, you know, what that cost is going to be. Our, our committee would recommend building a fire station. But build it in mind that we could always expand and add on additional wings if you wanted, you know, eventually connect to the PD or connect to the town office and make additional offices. You know, and we'll rotate that whole property up there. That that would be a recommendation. Right now, for what it was boss, I think, to keep the numbers down a little bit. Just the fire station at this time. But we're, we're, I'm sorry, we're, we're flexible whether we want to combine the two stations, kind of like what we did with the fleet of apparatus. We combined five before so we could purchase two new apparatus. We could combine the two stations, make one. But we feel there's going to be a lot of pushback from the residents in North Monmouth. There's already pushback from some of our firefighters that would like to keep a truck up in the north. But, you know, if it comes down to it, we've got to save five hundred thousand dollars, then maybe we just build one station.
Chief, do you have a present risk assessment study where there's, you know, because the station placement, it's not an arbitrary thing. It goes, you know, one minute, two minute, four minute response times and everything else. So that might not necessarily be, you know, ideal because we already own the land, but it doesn't mean it's the ideal spot for it. Is there something that you could dust off that would show where that would be?
Yeah, I, I don't have one on my fingertips.
I thought there was some.
There might have been one done.
I think Hugh had said there was something at some point in time. I don't think that demographics or anything has changed enough that if, even if the thing was ten years old, it wouldn't have that much of an impact on where it would go. But, um, you know, it's one of those things we got to look at for CIP. But I also, I'm kind of struck in the fact that you think it doubled the cost to combine both buildings because PD now is less than two thousand square feet, twenty five hundred square feet. I just have trouble digesting that that would actually double the cost. It would be five million dollars because we don't have three cruisers and a couple of offices. They're not going to need that much.
I was only using the figures from Winter when they looked at doing a public safety building. I think originally in perfect orange, it was four point seven million when they first went to the drawing table. But they were looking at, I think, EMS, PD and fire at that time. And then, and then they went back a second production and they were able to cut that down some, but then they still didn't settle on that. And then they just went their separate ways. Of course, their fire department, they got a nice, a nice private grant.
Mike, and can I just interject for a second because we weren't going to talk, get into a deep discussion tonight about CIP. I am planning to have a session in a few weeks to talk about long-term plans. And that might be a better opportunity for us to get into some real deep discussion about this.
I can look at better details too.
Dan, if it can, on this sheet that we got, it said one point seven million.
So that was the school reuse committee.
That's a school, that has nothing to do with them.
I was concerned about that amount of money.
Oh, I see.
That goes through, is that going to potentially handicap our chances of, you know, getting a new station in the next twenty years while that's being paid off?
So the thing to consider here, I think, as you look at this and we talk more about it in a couple of weeks. I think you need to consider that if that passed, and we also have a million dollar bond out there for the Gilman Road and the Backing Road. Now we'd be back to where we were fifteen years ago when we had bonds on Clemson that totaled about that amount of money.
Three was almost three and a half million.
Yeah, so just, I think we need to, to be cognizant of, of what's going on. So. And also be thinking about. The fact that the center is, as far as response time goes, is five minutes away from North Monmouth. Ten minutes away from East Monmouth, right? Then fifteen tops depending on what road you're going down or whatever. So I don't really see the need for a North Monmouth station if you're putting a station up here where the town office is because you're five minutes away from any place in North Monmouth. You're triple the time away from someplace in South Monmouth or East Monmouth.
South Monmouth would be the longest.
So anyway, that's all I got to say on it for tonight.
Appreciate the input. But just quick to Harold, it goes by your risk management profile where North Monmouth has a higher concentration of industrial complexes.
I understand all of that. I'm just saying that even. All that being taken into consideration, it's five minutes away versus, I don't think, again, we'll talk about it more in detail later. But I personally don't think that we need to have a station in North Monmouth unless it's the same satellite station we have there. If the risk is such that you need to have a truck right there. People still have to drive from wherever they have to drive to. I just consider that.
Okay, moving on real quick, the fire department is returning in person meetings starting tomorrow night. So we're going to be meeting, we can't meet in our meetings, too small for us, socially distanced. So we're going to take our trucks out, meet in the truck bays like we did back in the fall. We've also lifted our restriction on public access so public can start visiting our stations. But we're still strictly enforcing COVID guidelines. So we're still going to wear masks and physically distance and clean surfaces. Then the last thing I got is the governor, as you guys know, has lifted the restriction on outdoor gatherings. It's going to be at a hundred percent on May twenty fourth. So I'd like to propose to the board, are you guys okay with the fire department doing a Monmouth beach party in the summer?
I am.
I am.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I would love to get back to some type of normalcy and I think that would be a great start for the little fireworks. So if that'll be July third.
Are you thinking about Memorial Day or have talked to the Legion since that opens up before that?
No, we haven't. But certainly that, that would fall after the twenty fourth, so we could do a parade. I just haven't been able to lead them to see if they're going to do some type of ceremony.
Yeah, yeah.
There's only a couple of them left that are active, unfortunately. Any other questions to the fire department?
Nope. Let me know, Dan, which one.
I will, thank you.
Kevin? You, you there?
There he is.
I'm here. Hello?
Hello, we see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. I'm hoping you all got my monthly report. And for that, we had a hundred and eighteen calls to service hours for the month of February. We also had sixty one motor vehicle stops. And there was two criminal summonses, arrests, one was for an OUI and the other was a warrant. Any questions on the monthly report?
Looks good.
Okay. So next, Kurt Markman, my officer. I just got the news last week, he is not going to be able to go to the March Academy. But I did email the director and it's not a firm yes, but it's the possibility is he'll be going in August. He was a hundred and nine. That was his number. So obviously he didn't make it into this one, but he felt, the director felt pretty confident that he might be going to the academy in August. And the last thing I have is last Saturday, the Coney High School project graduation had their ice fishing derby on lunch drive. I see Joe sitting in there, so I want to thank him for parking some of the vehicles on his lawn. We were, we had actually had the road closed at six thirty AM. I showed up about quarter to five and Mike Mayer was already there. Had called me on my way in and said, we're almost full. So there was a bunch of people there and, but we got everything parked, everything closed down about six thirty and. It was very orderly actually, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Is anybody else there? No, it's not.
Ryan's door. Tom garage that was slated to be done and I got them all set and it's going to be put in in like three weeks. Also the trash man's station, they're going to go down below. Since all been out, it's been banned out for years. When the truck, on the trailer, the back end comes down, it gets and breaks all the time, so.
I think Dennis is trying to get your attention.
I'm sorry. And the price of the door at the garage is forty seven sixty four. And one for the transfer station is nine thousand, almost ninety six hundred dollars.
That the one down below?
Yes.
Compactor comes in out of.
And that's going to set it out. So because it's, it's like three inches from the trailer.
Oh, so you're adding a little bit.
Well, it's going to set it up, yeah.
What'd you say is the price of the one at the garage?
Forty seven.
Which one, are those three of those coming out of the existing budget this year?
Yeah, the forty seven.
Forty seven.
So do, do you really have to have a door on the compactor of the bay?
Yes. We, we got a Ryan today, it keeps squirming on us and it keeps on breaking the glad handles every time it comes down.
Why, my question is, do you have to have a door on that bay? Why, why do we have to have a door on that bay?
The wind will come up and the exhaust from the motor on the, from the compactor will go up and blow through and blow trash everywhere. That's what Trudy had said. Why it's over, I said, let's keep it open for now, okay?
So that one.
And that, I'm probably correct in giving that.
Yes.
To what?
All these animals, guns, or whatever it is in there.
People. So is that on, coming out of this year's budget or next?
Next year.
So you want that in next year's budget? Now, what are we going to do with the design so it isn't getting all filled up again?
Shouldn't have that problem, we're not over a foot.
That's assuming that the next trail is the same length as the trail.
Thank you.
Well, we had an election yesterday. We have nine hundred and forty people vote altogether, which is a really good turnout for our season election. For the results, we did post on the website last night and I also posted on Facebook, the Hickman won the state senate race with five hundred and forty four votes and the rep came in at three hundred and ninety four. The moratorium did not pass, the no votes were five hundred and seventy nine and the yes votes were three hundred and fifty one. It was a really good election yesterday. It was slow, it was tough going for the workers, especially those who were working the entire day. But people would trickle in during the day, sometimes clumps of eight people would come in, sometimes clumps of one people would come in.
I classified myself as a fall.
You know, there were times when we would look around and the room was, was kind of full and that was great. And then it would slow down again to like nothing. But it was a good day, we were out of there last night, we had the results by about eight fifteen and we were out packed up. Thankfully Public Works was up there and got us all wrapped up because we had to be out of the school so that they could be back in the gym this morning. And Public Works got us out of there, we were out of the building at nine o'clock. Kimberly and I headed home at nine twenty last night, so that's, that's a good night. Nomination papers, I just want to remind everyone again, nomination papers became available last Wednesday, the third. For one select board seat, one RSU two seat and one library trustee seat. No one has taken out nomination papers as yet, but they are available at the town office. I have been thinking about ways to reopen the swap table up at the transfer station. We reached out to the municipal association to get some guidance on it. I have a letter that I can ship off to all of you tomorrow. But basically they're saying it has to be in a separate building. It has to be attended at all times. It has to be ADA compliant and it has to be away from the main areas of disposal. So, you know, traffic is not coming up near it and endangering the people who are coming to the swap table. So those are some of the considerations to take, to keep in mind. We'll have to think about safety because this is our insurance coverage that we're talking about people getting hurt. Talked a little bit about the COVID thing and it wasn't going to go there because, you know, the arguments are still out there on whether or not the virus is staying on surfaces. But we will look into that a little bit more and see what we can do to bring that back because I know the people really like it.
So how did we get away with it for all those years?
They didn't know about it. I mean, it hasn't been apparently, from what I understand, it's only started about three or four years ago.
It's been around a long time.
So I was trying to be, it hasn't been around that long, but.
No, it's been around a long time.
I think they didn't know about it. And, you know, you've got to make sure that it's a safe environment, people coming in, that they're not slipping, it's not muddy, it's not wet, that kind of thing, but.
It's on a cement pad covered by a roof and, and it's great access, it's, it's grade level. I mean, that's ADA compliant right there.
And it's away from traffic.
Yeah.
I just don't see, I don't see this, I really don't.
It seems ridiculous.
Because I don't think the parking spots go that far over, do they?
Yeah, but people driving right through the cones.
Well, exactly, yeah.
Well, if you, if you put down a.
Jersey barrier, yeah.
Or a bollard or something that you can work around to stop people from.
Couple of bollards so that people can't drive into it, I think would be appropriate.
We will look at it, we are still down one person at the transfer station. So we have to have this area tended by somebody constantly or someone at least nearby, you know.
I don't get that. We, we've got a person at the compactor area all the time anyway, so that's to me is.
And someone at the recycle trailer all the time.
There's always somebody at the trash compactor that's in the area. So that, to me, you haven't said anything, that doesn't mean we can't do the.
Start back there, yeah. We will look at it.
Do you have any contemporary references? I mean, in my mind, I just see this thing as silly. You're, you're already at the dump, so you've already absorbed the risk, the person's on the ground, is already there. And then you're walking to drop your cans and bottles and there's a table with a Monopoly game on it. You grab that, that's just beyond belief. There's got to be something we can come up with.
It's insurance, you know, they're, they're picking about things and.
Of course.
But we will, we're looking into it.
Yeah, we could push back on that.
As long as we're covered, if something happens, that's the most important thing. But we'll, we'll look at.
Well, there's assumed risk by entering the transfer station.
Well, there's some risk to entering any town property that, you know, anything could happen. And then there were some things that we can't allow to happen that are inherently dangerous.
And walking across a flat surface to get to a swap table is not one of them.
Exactly.
It's more dangerous trying to dump your trash into the hopper under the chain and not lose your trash can, which I've done many times. Or the wheels off your trash can because you're trying to grab it.
Anyway, just want to let you know we opened it, that's the guidance we're getting. We will work with the guidance and we will do the best that we can up there to get this up in the name.
I guess I would ask them, what can we do to keep it right where it is? Can we put bollards up and so on and so forth? And, and we're going to have this person right there and this meets all your criteria. A lot of times they're just being over cautious and ridiculous. And if you point out that we're doing the things to comply with their issues, that they'll back off a little bit.
Right. We'll do that, we'll have them come up. They're really good about coming in, inspecting and telling us when we're doing things right and when we're doing things wrong. We're doing a lot of things right these days, so.
Well, while you're at it, for that, and I talked about this the other day. I've had a number of calls since then about people who use the woodpile to heat their homes and use a woodpile for crafts. And while you're at it, let's, let's talk with them about what we can do to have some wood in a sort of, to do something to make that happen also. There has to be some way to do it.
They have showed us that picking and taking items from wood piles, metal piles, anything like that, people climbing up on those piles. They get a piece of wood that they, you know, like the looks of, whether it's for crafts or whatever, is very dangerous.
Well, they can't climb on the pile, we're not going to allow that.
If you can step on a piece of wood on one end, it's got a nail on the other and the nail ends up right in the head. And they, they've had this happen around the state, so they're saying these types of things are not covered by our insurance. And if something like that happens, there's no waving away the wrist. So if something like that happens, the taxpayers will be on the hook for it.
Well, while they're down here, since you're going to talk to them about the swap tables, let's talk to them about that and see if there's anything we can do. A lot of people, like again, a lot of people use that to heat their homes, they use it for crafts, they use it for other things. And I, I just, the world's getting a little bit too ridiculous.
We have checked with some other transfer stations to see if they allow people to take items like that out of the transfer stations and we're hearing that they don't.
Well, I understand that Winter does. Since when?
Yeah.
Oh, next are select board reports. Well, that was my one big thing. And again, I can't stress it enough that we need to see if we can figure. Well, that was my one big thing, and again, I can't stress it enough that we need to see if we can figure something out on that. But another one is uh, I did get a estimate from the rec committee on uh a playground at the um Mama Center Beach, okay? Equipment is gonna would run about twenty-eight thousand and the uh site work would run about five. And I would like to see us craft a warrant article question to ask the voters if uh they'd like to have that built using proceeds from the control school sale. Keeping in mind, one of the big things that came out of the comprehensive uh plan survey they did about six, eight months ago or a year ago was uh I think one of the overwhelming answers is the of the people who did respond was they wanted to see more recreational activities in town, and this would be for the children, obviously. So I'll give you this information as we leave and I'd like to see a question crafted for that. Let them decide if they want to spend the money or not.
I think the one concern I have about putting something else at the beach is the size of the playground equipment because if you go to the beach, you might not be at the beach to use the playground and you might not want to be next to children using the playground, and if it's so large that it's taking up the green space or you have to sit in the poison ivy on the far side of the beach, I think the size of it needs to be considered so that we can see the size, the depth, the breadth of the playground that they are throwing out there. Because I think having green space at the beach far outweighs having a ginormous playground set.
Well, they're gonna move, first of all, they're gonna remove the existing swing set.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is.
This one here is about thirty square, thirty feet by thirty.
So, you know, seeing what you're left with.
Be a a big deal, like it's up to you.
Well, I think seeing what you're left with, if we look at that space and say, okay, thirty by thirty, and what are we left with for green space, and if you there's no place to sit with your kids or sit by yourself on busy days, I think that, you know, the size of it has to be considered.
No, that's fine. I still want to craft a question.
I will, I'll bring the question forward with all the other questions when I bring them forward at the next meeting. And you can, at that time, tell me as a board, if you want to put that on, you don't want to put it on, or if there's anything else you want to put on or don't want to put on.
We can certainly limit the size if the townspeople do uh vote to accept something like that.
What's thirty by thirty here? Like, is that wall thirty feet?
You measured this? This is, this is thirty-seven feet, so it'd be almost.
That's twenty feet and this is.
He said this is thirty-seven, so we had them thirty-eight. So essentially, that is huge. That is huge. That's a huge area.
I don't think it's that big. I think the kids deserve it, especially since we took the the control school one away from them. And the other one has only got another seven or eight year lifespan left in it.
We could craft a question to uh to uh ask for approval to build it according to the space available.
Something like that, yeah, I can do that, too.
So if twenty by twenty works and thirty by thirty doesn't, then we could go twenty by twenty.
One of the things, one of the things that I don't understand, one of the things that I have heard a lot of.
Well, that's what I mean.
They do want more playing playing options at the beach for the kids.
That's what I'm saying. We're asking for approval to build the thing. We're not specifying how big it's gonna be in the question, so we make it fit the size that it needs to fit.
Actually, we're just asking for the ability to spend the money.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing I would like to bring up too is I'd like to put more money back in the paving budget and maybe hold off on a couple of things to offset that cost, but we can discuss that when we get to that point. I just want to everybody to keep that in mind. Uh, the Cressy Road, the Pine Hill Road, the Cemetery Road, and uh I I it it the end of the uh Wilson Pond Road, which is not called Wilson Pond Road, what's it called?
Gun.
Yeah, I mean, they're they're just horrible. They're 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 in unbelievably bad shape, worse than what the Gilman was.
Oh, really? And now you're talking?
Well, I mean, over the past several years, they're just terrible during mud season. And and I understand the Warren, I I drove down the Warren Road and while I see that it is cracking up some, I I think we could possibly put that one off for a year, address these other ones that are really, really bad. And we're getting constant, constant complaints on, but that's my opinion. We can discuss it further as we go forward.
Now, I have a, I have some budget notes I want to talk to you all about tonight as we get into the budget anyway, paving. And we keep here, that's why we decided I wanted to be here tonight to talk about uh some estimates that he's received on doing some of the roads. So we can talk about that as we get into the budget.
Okay, uh, next, our public comment. And is there anybody who wants to comment?
One.
Dennis?
Dennis is holding his hand up.
Oh.
Who is it?
No.
No, we're good.
No, okay. Thank you. Uh, next is placing an amendment to the Shoreland Zoning District on the June eighth uh twenty twenty-one town warrant meeting uh town meeting warrant, adding a recreational business lake protection district, changing map forty-three, block thirty from Shoreland Residential to recreational business lake protection.
I'll move and place the amendment on the warrant. I attended many of the meetings of recently of the planning board and I'm rather familiar with it. The abutters have been discussing it with the planning board and the owners of uh Kipewa for, oh god, two years, I think. And uh, they're, I guess, uh fairly well in agreement uh moving forward that uh the question and the changes are in a form that they they can uh, as they put it, live with.
I haven't heard any opposition to it, so I would second that.
Okay. So, a motion by Tim, second by Mike to 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 uh place that amendment on the uh on our ballot. Yes.
I just wanted to say, I I got pulled into this discussion probably the first month that I was here and these these people have worked very hard. There are attorneys all the way around with some of the residents with Kipewa. And I have watched them over the last months, you know, coming together and working together, and it's nice to see developers doing that. Um, or or landowners doing that and working with the people around them. So this has been a nice process to see finally come here.
Good. This is Doreen, let's see.
Doreen is not on tonight. We're gonna send her a recording of the Zoom meeting.
Oh, okay. Next thing up is. Oh, sorry, we haven't voted. So all those in favor of uh that placing on me? Thank you. Uh, okay, then on to uh the next one, which is placing a question on the June eighth twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant regarding renovation or demolition of the former.
Demolition?
Excuse me, Dennis. Demolition of the former Mammoth Middle School.
I would like to make a motion that we put a question on that that and I have worked on very hard to give the town people a choice for a one point seven million dollar bond to renovate the middle school, which would be a total cost of it, that would be up to one point seven million dollars, and the way the question is worded, uh, it would not be uh go to the bond bank until the fall, so if uh if the project was approved, there'd be ample time for people to uh do a fundraiser to help reduce that, and we would also know by then the outcome of the control school sale, so we can apply money from that for it. The other option is it is neither or question. Uh, and the other one is to demo uh to demo the all the buildings except for the playground and old administration stick built wood building, and that would be a cost of four hundred fifty-two thousand and eight hundred and ten dollars. The um school reuse task force put much more than two years of effort into this. They explored options like co-working, sale, uh housing. We had people from uh contractors down to assess the building. We've had architects look at the building, we had mainstay housing look at the building. Um, we had engineering studies done, uh very extensively, uh sense of engineering studies done. Uh, so we know a great deal about the condition of the building, what it's gonna take to 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 repair uh them, uh in particular, the old Mammoth Academy, because that's the one that's people have the emotional attachment to. And it is an emotional issue, so we need to be careful about how we go forward here. Uh, but that's basically my motion is to put this question on the on the ballot.
Now, when when we um, we would address document recommendations next week when we cover the warrant.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'll suck it.
Okay, so there's a motion by Tim, a second by Harold to approve that Tim's motion. Uh, all those in favor?
Well, we need, we should ask the.
You should ask for the discussion then, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair? I have a question.
Say it louder.
I have a question.
I'm here.
Hello?
I can't make out who it is.
This is Ken Ackley, have a question on this issue.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Ken.
So, as I understood it, the total projected cost is not more than one point seven million dollars?
Correct.
And and as I understand it, the proceeds from the elementary school, the Cattrell School is gonna be, is expected to be what?
Uh, at this point, uh probably somewhere south of four fifty.
Okay, so.
There had been developments.
So if we, if the town were to float a bond for the difference, whatever that turns out to be, whether it's, you know, uh one point three million or what? Um, do we have a sense of what the annual payment would be for that?
Yes, we do. That is in the analysis. One point two million dollars, the annual payment would be somewhere around of course, the interest is a little different now, but uh it's it's projected on there to be about sixty-nine thousand dollars, probably northern neighborhood of seventy-five, seventy-eight.
Because.
Because the interest is a little different, but uh.
The cost of demolition would be an offset.
Yeah.
So if the or part of the question passed where the, do you favor demolition of the facility, then the cost of the demolition and the and the revenue from the sale would basically offset each other.
Gotcha. So it would either be a zero question, what I'm hearing you say, Tim and Harold, is that it would either be a a net zero uh effect to the town if we were to demolish this, the 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 facility?
Would be very close.
Okay, uh or we'd be looking at approximately seventy-five thousand dollars a year uh in obligations for the next twenty twenty years.
That's.
And I did put down what the cost per year, uh if you look at that analysis, and uh there is a cost per year, it's an impact on on homes, uh the median home in the town, and uh there's a mill impact and a per year impact uh in in actual dollars, your your uh property taxes would go up, and at one point two million dollars, it's it's probably somewhere around thirty dollars a year.
Got it. Thank you.
And I will urge people, should just be put on the ballot to uh look at those figures, and we're gonna make sure that we advertise these analysis and the figures and things. And not only the community advertiser, but on the website and every place else we can, uh just to make sure people are aware of what they're voting for.
Yes. I appreciate the work of the of the board in bringing this forward. However, I at this point in time and space, without a total needs assessment and where uh this doesn't even fit into a long range CIP um to create an indebtedness of for twenty years or something we don't have a particular use for. Uh, I think at this point in time, it is irresponsible. Um, I support um the fact that it is a historic building, people do have um a vested interest, well, some people do, in trying to preserve it either for a community center sometime in the near future or uh relisting it in on a with a commercial broker like we did with the Cattrell School. Um, so I I I just uh with talking about a fire station, talking about roads being built, um town is not printing money and I I just don't, I just cannot be supportive of of this kind of indebtedness without uh a specific uh specific odds.
Oh, damn. Excuse me.
Well, from my point of view, that's that's why we have a, we have a vote. So if the town agrees with you, which which I happen to agree with you that we we, I don't think we can afford it. Um, then then the people will know in the vote to demo everything but the stick part and uh and we can do with the space whatever we decide to do.
I think that, you know, the other option too is if looking at a one point seven million dollar bond isn't in our wheelhouse right now, coming up with an alternative and giving them, you know, the option of demolition of everything or demolition of everything except the old academy and coming up with a mothball scenario without putting a new roof on it and um taking a step back and figuring out what we need to do um to move forward and what will keep, you know, um the town from not having this expenditure because, like you said, we're, nobody's printing money around here and we don't know what the budget's gonna hold for the state of Maine, and there's a lot of unknowns right now, so being physically responsible, I think, is really important. The other thing that I wanted to say for a long time about these buildings is that in two thousand and nine, when we um joined the RSU, these buildings weren't in that condition. RSU number two made a conscious choice to defer and neglect the maintenance of the schools. And they did it for one reason, to get a new school, and once the new school was approved, they essentially stopped doing anything to the Cattrell School or the middle school, including mowing the lawns. And when you have a tr- a tree the size of my arm growing out of the front porch of the old academy, it just exemplifies the neglect of these buildings and it's um, so now here we are faced with the rehab and the care of these buildings and what we're gonna do. So, you know, each time we pass the warrant to pay the RSU money, I get a little sick to my stomach because I think we deserve better as a town and so did our students. And, you know, now the townspeople are asking, well, if it wasn't good enough for the students, why is it good enough for us? But um the old academy deserves a second look. It deserves better. It served us well for a hundred and fifty years. It should be respected and given the chance to serve again. But we need to come up with a clear plan that's gonna serve the community for what the community needs. So what are our future needs and what are our requirements to stay current and responsible and appropriate? So that's something that I've wanted to share for a long time, but I really support looking at another option other than floating a one point seven million dollar bond.
Now, let me address all those things if I might. A year from now or two years from now, uh if we try to sell those buildings, you're not gonna get a bond. Okay, no one's gonna put eight million dollars into those buildings to bring them up to code.
I'm not talking about.
I'm not done yet, please. Okay, no one is going to take and buy those. Okay, no one is going to take and buy those buildings to demo them for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have a piece of property that's worth eighty or ninety thousand dollars. It's just nobody's going to do that, period, not going to happen. All right, second of all, if we want to mothball the old academy and demo everything else, it's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, because we've got to build walls. Foundations, repair things, and then what are we going to do? Say, okay, three, four years from now, let's spend another five hundred thousand. To do this, and then a couple more years, we'll spend another three or four hundred thousand to do that, right? Right up front, we need to tell the people in town how much it's going to cost. We need to be honest with them, we don't, we shouldn't be nickel and diamond them to death. All right, tell them what it's going to cost, this is the plan, all right? If you want to save a building because you feel that it's worth saving, fine, we'll figure out how to do it. But this is the cost. Building has to be brought up to code, has to be ADA accessible, has to have an elevator, has to have foundational work, has to have the roof replaced, has to have wall built, walls built. All right, we can't just take and say. All right, we'll mothball this building for five years, maybe someone will buy it, put it on a historic registry, which isn't going to happen either. Because once you alter the building, it's fifty years before you can apply to the historic registry again. Right, it makes sense to tell people what it's going to cost. If their sentimentality wants them to save that building, fine, go for it, I'll be happy to help them. Right, if they don't want to do that, and they want to take and demolish everything, let's look at trying to make a monument to the building. To to save the front facade as a monument or do something. But we need to be honest with the people in this town, tell them how much it's going to cost right up front. And then we'll go from there.
I'd like to respond, Doug. First of all, Tim, nobody's being dishonest, so I I think we've.
But I'm not implying.
I have the floor, as you said earlier, I have the floor, okay, you can get, you can report after. So nobody's being dishonest. I think it's disingenuous to float a one point seven million dollar bomb without a specific use, okay? That's the number one issue. As far as mothballing, I think Mr. Mishu did have a mothball plan in his original proposal. That will buy us some time to really assess this to find out if we need it or not. The old, the, everything except for the eighteen fifty six portion of the building. Needs to come down, we are not getting out of that expense. And. I think Kristin's had some great ideas for the building about doing, you talked about doing a capital fundraiser, maybe we just need time to let that shake out. I I just feel like we're getting forced into something because there's a few that have a select agenda. That aren't really listening to what other townspeople want to do, and I think we're getting squeezed into a box, and we don't need to be. We have time to reassess this thing. So if the building is going to be weather tight with a roof. I I think that that's an option that we have some verbiage that we could cover that would probably get us through for a year or two. And I want to kind of defer to Mr. Mishu to see if. Mothballing it and having a roof on it, keeping it weather tight would. Would be any issues with the building while we're doing an assessment on what we really need to do with this. And that, and that option still is costly, I just want to say that too, there is no bonding involved with that.
Right, the, when I looked at, and I'm trying to dig back into the grammar here to remember exactly how I put it together, I think when I was. I did the budgeting for mothballing, it was for the entire.
Entire facility.
As soon as you start down the path of demolishing portions of it, especially because of the way those buildings are connected. And you have to, as Tim pointed out, build the walls to cover those, now you're going down a path where you're you're starting construction. I would almost, this is just a suggestion, if you want to go down the mothball route. Consider mothballing the whole thing until the time, the time is right to either demo or. Or restore the portion, that I think, I think, I think the mind that once you start doing any sort of real construction. Then we can put your balls and so forth. In for many, for pounds or thing, I I think, I I think, and I'm doing the mental gymnastics right now, because I don't think I did that originally, I think I did a little bit mothballing the entire. Complex, not just the one, one building, I'm not saying it's about, yeah, I think it certainly warrants consideration. Also, as we talked about. The the regional numbers for mothballing, didn't look at the severe condition of the roof at the time, I knew the roof needed to be replaced. But that also triggered things like, you know, how is the cupola being supported, it doesn't, doesn't, you know, I, we didn't get into that level. I didn't climb into the attic space to look at, look at how that was structured and supported and all that, that might be something that would need to be looked at a little more closely.
We were having difficulty getting into the attic in our.
Yeah, exactly, so just for consideration, if you do. I would basically try to say you can't just take the mothball numbers I prescribed, I think you need to look into a little more deeply if that's what the town wants to do. And so I I think, you know, potentially there are three possible options. Demo all, mothball until you're ready, and it's a word for it right now, but that's just an outsider's perspective on. I've I've got no, no strings attached, I'm trying to revise the number history and.
Could you go over those three options again?
So the the thought process, the the two obvious ones are the ones that are in the. The proposal as as read, one is demo everything. And that is what it is, the other is, the opposite, then you've got demo everything, but the eighteen fifty six portion of the building and renovated to the one point seven. Million dollars, and then third possibly is. You know, make it secure, mothball it, you know, just to buy yourself five years or something like that, so that you have time to consider. Other uses or a real need, it it basically, it's in a way, does kind of kick the hand down the road a little bit, but it gives. The people who may have interest in using the visit building. Chances to decide what those uses might be and or fundraise for them, so that, you know, you're not. You know, funding it with the debt service going next. So what's, what's the risk that if we, if we were to mothball the facility, which I am not, I'll tell you right in front, I'm not in favor of. What is the risk that the building deteriorates to the point where it isn't viable to rehab it? Well, if you've got some history to go by, right, how long, two thousand nine, you said the R S U took over and they kind of let, made it slip, it's not going to get any better.
Harold, you're talking about the entire complex, you're saying.
No, I'm not, eighteen fifty six building.
He's talking about just the eighteen fifty six portion.
Which is the worst of the of the law.
Yeah, because the the biggest concern with that is the roof. Well, and like you said, you haven't, you don't know what the ceiling look like, you don't know what the the interior supports look like. You could tear the roof off and decide that there's nothing to put a new roof on. So there's a, there's a real inherent risk with doing that.
What did I add?
So and I, let me just quickly address, the the school reuse committee has been doing its work for two years. There have been all kinds of thoughts, provoke, proposals, suggestions that are that are brought forward. And at the end of that extensive, extensive procedure. This is what the committee came up with. So if if people weren't attending the committee, they weren't offering their suggestions, well, then it's late now, we we've got to do something. So my thought is that, because I don't think mothballing is a viable. Alternative, just because we have no idea whether we can even do that, put a new roof on, without. We don't even know if the building will support that. We don't know if, you know, what the foundation's going to look like in a year from now, two years from now, so. From my point of view, our options are, we either, the the people, not us, it's not us making this decision, it's the voters who are going to bear the. The burden of the, of the. Appropriation, so it's up to the voters to decide, do we do something with the facility now when we can save it? Or do we just say, this costs too much money, we love the old place, but we just can't afford it, sometimes those are the hard decisions you have to make. With an old something that you love, and it it's just, it's going to cost more than you can love it. And and you you decide that you you need to love the picture, or like Tim said, when you, when you, when it get, if it. Got demolished, you you always a way to save the savable materials and reconstruct them. So you could make a facade. On the property that. That is a remembrance of what the old building was, so. So I seconded the motion, those are, those are my thoughts behind that.
I wanted to ask Linda about the, did get an estimate to replace the roof.
Yeah.
And that was a hard and fast, and somebody sent it around.
Sixty nine thousand, I think.
It was more than that.
So if I could just kind of make a couple of comments, you all are going to do whatever you think is best, and I'll do whatever you want me to do, so I have no stake in this. Just a couple of things, though, from having been in these buildings on a regular basis with Lori inspecting them. And knowing what's happening to Cottrell now on almost a daily basis is a new leak is bringing up here, a new leak is bringing up there, and these are not just drip drip type leaks. We had like a little flood up there a couple of weeks ago, and we were up there with shot bats trying to dry it up, so. On the roof estimate, he did get up into the eaves and we, at his own risk, he was insured, his companies insured him. He went up there and said that the eaves all look good as far as replacing the roof, came up with the estimate. And you saw the estimate that I sent out to you, I did notice that he also is recommending that when you take the. Cupola, cupola bell tower off and put it back after you've had that restored, that you not put the bell back on there, so I'm thinking he's got some concern about the weight of the bell, I don't know. I don't know anything about the foundation, whether we would hold a new roof, that's a different concern, but. I am a little concerned about mothballing the entire facility. Without new roofs on the whole facility, because eventually the gym ceiling is coming down, it's already like this. There are places throughout the building that are even worse than the library section. Plaster is now coming off the wall, leaks are coming in from different places, and it's just destroying that whole property on a regular basis, so. I would not want to see us mothball the entire structure without, without any work on it, because it'll just get worse. And when, when do we stop putting the money to fix, patch, patch the roof up? And then what happens if the roof caves in the gym? Because I I think eventually it's going to, that building just can't stand any snow loads up there, heavy rains, the windstorms that we've gotten with wind driven rain. We've had problems with their teeth knows too, because he's been up there with us and seen all the plaster falling off the wall.
And the problem, just to tag on to that, the problem was when you have leaky roofs, leaky. Anything that you don't know what the interior of the walls look like. At all, I mean, I have rehabbed an old building, okay, it's old, in fact, part of it older than the academy. It's an absolute nightmare, Tim helped me, you don't know what you're getting into until you start pulling things apart. And so that's why I say that, that from my point of view, we have two options that are viable in front of us, we either. The townspeople approve the money necessary to rehab this building, and we're not, we're not. There's no floor plan that's in the ballot question, in the refer, in the warrant question, there's no floor plan in there, there's no design planning. There's just, do you approve this amount of money to rehab this building? So in the time between, if it got approved, it gets approved, and you actually go to the bond bank, if there's some. Adjustments that that better suit. Anybody's potential needs, then as long as they don't exceed the bonded amount, those adjustments can be made. We're not, we're not approve, we're not asking the voters to approve a, a design, we're simply asking them to approve the money to do the work. Or to not approve it and demo it.
And the other thing I would point out is you cannot do a capital project, a fundraiser for something that the voters have not approved. If they haven't approved to rehab that building, you can't raise money to rehab it outside of the warrant.
You can't, you can't collect money, but you can start the process of. Looking at what you're going to need and. Making the.
I just put in the car before the horse, I think.
Well, I I think that the other part that I've mentioned before is hard for me, is you do a capital campaign, and then you can't use that money to pay down the bond. The capital campaign has to go to something else completely, you know, it has to.
But that's why we wrote the question the way it is, it gives you time to do a capital. Campaign or a fundraiser before you go to the bond bank. So the question is written up to, if you manage to get a couple hundred thousand dollars, and there's. Three or four hundred thousand dollars available from the Cottrell School sale, that's going to reduce that bond by five, six hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's, that's the reasoning behind.
And if, if demoing the A and B wings creates a, a can of worms for those walls, you know, thinking about. Demoing from that. Crazy hallway they added to get to the gym, I mean, that crazy hallway, that that connector. To the A and B or the A wing and everything from that connector back being demoed, and I can't imagine that. How that connector was built, all it was, was a pair of doors that went out there by Toby Young's lab, you know, it. To to change and shore up one section, you know, if you're thinking the A and B wings, but. You know, I I I just think throwing out a number without. A plan about what the building and what the town really needs to be, you know, what the towns, townspeople need and want. I think there's a lot of options.
Well, if we decide not to put it on the warrant, I'm pretty sure that situational resolve itself by next year, because something's going to collapse over there. That's my feeling on.
I agree with that, we have to make a decision on it. The foundation of the, I'm just talking about the eighteen fifty six portion, the underpinnings of that, I mean, the lines about that building look good, I'm not seeing any wall punching out. I'm not seeing any major separation in it, mortar work where it's caving in on one corner, so isn't anything outwardly that indicates that that building's in any. Structural distress other than, you know, the obvious that it will be if we don't do something. The connectors that go to that. I know there's some challenges in in closing up those ends to keep it weather tight, but I I don't see that as insurmountable, because it's not that large of an area. When those connectors were put on, they were probably attached to the exterior brickwork. And, you know, that would have to be disassembled, either. Shore it up with, you know, framing lumber during the interim or re-bricked until. What's the options on, are you concerned about those, you know, the, one of the things that comes to mind with that building is when they did the. In Lewiston, when they were redoing the courthouse on Lisbon Street, and it was kind of what Harold was saying, they started getting into it, and all of a sudden, the thing was caving in. I mean, and and they had to redo a design bill, because they had to put structural steel in the whole walls from buckling out, of course, this building is, you know, an eighth of the size, but. The unknowns are. You know, it can be perilous, but. In an effort to, at at the very most or the very least, to keep the building intact and get rid of the stuff that Linda was talking about that's in a horrible shape. Man, what are we looking at where those connectors are?
Well, you're right, I didn't see anything that jumped out any structurally or from an envelope perspective on the interview rings. The foundation, the perimeter foundation underneath the fifty six building wasn't something that was, you could see parts of it, that I. We we talked before about how there have been issues in the past with the foundation.
And actually, some of it doesn't exist, you can see right outside.
Yeah, exactly, so there's, there's that, it hasn't manifested itself in any kind of deterioration in the wall, the support of the structure. Understand that when I did the assessment a year or so ago, the roofs were covered with snow, so I couldn't get a really good look at the A and B wing roofs. However, I do remember seeing, quite used things, seeing piles, I'm guessing those roofs are not in great shape either. I think they're, I feel they're useful. Those, and as you mentioned, Harold, the. But it's the, it's a leaking and the and the damage it does internally that scares most people, because.
that scares most people, because once you start getting moisture inside a wall, so you don't know what you get until you start tearing it apart. It is interesting concept, maybe to think about using the A and B wings until you give them the decision, but those are, at least the roofs are not new either, and so you have the same issue there as you do on the eighteen fifty-six portion. I'm trying to process this as we're talking about it, think of different options, but yeah, I don't know, it's a, it's a tough one. You are at the end, the, the buildings themselves are, are beyond the end of their useful life in the condition that they're in. And delays of any kind are just gonna make it that much harder to salvage anything. We run the risk of, as Tim said, you know, letting nature take its course. Something is about to hurt, if the decision is maybe go that way. I know I'm not giving you any solid answers, but I'm giving you some information from my observations and that's all I can provide.
So what I'm, what I'm gleaning from you is that your advice would be it's better to act sooner on these buildings than it is to postpone action of any major, any major type of action, because we could run the risk of losing it altogether. We could put the money into mothballing and lose it altogether. That's a possibility. Yeah. So at this point, is there any objection to calling for a vote?
I have no.
So all those in favor of Tim's motion, it was seconded by Harold? All those opposed?
I know a few people can figure out what to do with it.
No need to be rude, Tim.
No, I'm not being rude, I mean, it's just, I have just one comment, that I will vote against anything that is gonna spend a few hundred thousand dollars to mothball or try to save a building and then come back to the voters and ask them for more money in the future. We need to be honest with them right up front, tell them what the total cost is gonna be and give them that choice.
So assuming you'll, somebody will have a question for the, the next meeting on what we're gonna ask voters to approve the building.
Unless anyone has anything they wanted to offer tonight, contrary, I can work with the three who were opposed to see what you want to bring forward to the next meeting. That sound good?
Work on a draft.
So it has to be at the next meeting, we have to
Next thing on the agenda is warrant number nineteen.
My name's over a thousand dollars, A E Harton Consulting Engineers, this was for the drawings and inspection of the middle school, the history, the library section that you all received in your packets, twenty-five hundred ten dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks, excavation trips, two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. Central Rain Power, our electric bill, streetlights, one thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars ninety-eight cents. Chem search for garage chemicals for public works, one thousand four hundred thirty dollars ninety-four cents. Consolidated Communications, telephone service for all town buildings, one thousand three hundred seven dollars ninety-six cents. Prices in council centers, annual funding, this was approved through the warrant last year, a thousand dollars. Equal Maine recycling fees, three thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars thirty-five cents. Baby and oil for heating several of our buildings, including Thompson, two thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars sixty-four cents. Family Violence Project, this is another annual funding, the dues are starting to come up now, we're repaying the ones that were approved on the warrant last year, a thousand dollars. Fleet Truck and Refrigeration, cable, rug, batteries, bearings, wheel stud, oil. One thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. G D I Services, our monthly cleaning bill, three thousand fifty dollars. Main Municipal Association for our workers' comp insurance, nineteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars ten cents. Employee Health Insurance, sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars fifty-four cents. Main Ways to Energy for Solid Waste Services, ten thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars four cents. McGee Construction for Stone, one thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Minuteman Security Technologies, this is for fire alarm inspections for a couple of our buildings, one thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars fifty cents. Miracle Recreation Equipment, this is a replacement of the child swing on the playground behind the middle school that we have to maintain. One thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars twenty-five cents. New England Salt Company for Salt, five thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars sixty-seven cents. Regional School Unit Two, for the school appropriation, four thou, four hundred thirty thousand, six hundred fifty dollars sixty-five cents. Spectrum Generations, another annual funding, two thousand one hundred two dollars ten cents. Treasurer State of Maine for motor vehicle plates, taxes and fees and titles, three thousand five hundred thirteen dollars twenty-seven cents. And Treasurer State of Maine for the two thousand thirteen Ford Taurus that the police department picked up at Salvage or up in Augusta, five thousand dollars.
Other question for Keith real quick, how much salt do you have on hand and you envision having to buy smaller or?
We have three loaves, like nine yards.
And when you use, how many yards of storm on the average?
Forty yards. Thirty yards.
Oh, it's probably, I close to twenty-five.
Twenty-five yards, so you basically have enough for three vanger storms. So you should be hopefully good.
Right.
Okay. Will we approve the warrant?
Well, what did, what did you have to, what was the repairs you had to do to the playground?
I had to replace the child swing, the, there's a special swing that was on that swing set.
For the handicapped accessibility? Cost that much?
Yeah, yeah, playgrounds are not cheap.
Oh, so.
I'll second.
Mike seconded it, oh, all those in favor of paying the warrant? Thank you. Go on to the, the project review.
So for the, the sake of the couple of people, John is here and Joe is on Zoom. I'm gonna wait, I have some budget notes that I'd like to go over with you and get hopefully a couple of decisions tonight before we leave. I'll save those until we've gone through these various departments. So we have the recreation budget, which is up four thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars. Basically, this is paying the lifeguard, so the increased salary when minimum wage went up. And also for soccer goals, and Joe Fletcher is on the Zoom meeting and ready to present his budget. Or answer questions. Joe, I think you might be on mute.
There we go, how's that? Okay, well, good evening, everyone, as you can see, you have the budget before you and we, we were tasked at trying to keep the budget as, to try to mimic last year's as much as possible. With the wages, that was the wage increase that made it a little bit difficult. But as Linda said, it's the, the budget's up four thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and a major portion of that is the committee has decided, is requesting that we purchase two soccer goals and the reason, the rationale for that is for years, we've used the middle school goals on the high school fields. And those goals last year were transported to the fairgrounds while they built the new middle school field. Those goals are gonna go to the middle school this year and that field won't be available for us to use. So we're tasked with using the fields at the fairgrounds without any goals. So therefore, goals, goals are needed and goals are expensive, I will admit, they're, for two goals, it's thirty-seven, three thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. That comes with anchors and nets. And those goals, I will take care of them in the, in the late fall to take the nets off them, to preserve them best we can. The, the only other increase we had was just a slight increase in number seven in the general supplies. We went up slightly with the two hundred dollar increase. That, gentlemen and ladies, is the, really the only significant raise in the, in the budget, again, the cost of living accounts for the slight raise and the number one, the wages. I, as, as the director, I'm a little worried about, about using the school facilities, I've been in correspondence with the A D, Steve Bell. To this date, they're still not sure if we're gonna be able to use the facilities next fall. We were able to use the soccer facilities last fall, but as the, as the COVID took shape, we didn't have a basketball season at all, we didn't offer cheering. We've been in limbo since the end of soccer, we haven't offered anything. We would like to be able to offer as much as possible this summer in conjunction with swimming at the beach, with all the, all the local coaches are willing to give their time to provide clinics for baseball, basketball, softball and soccer. So it's been a frustrating time for me, not being able to provide for our kids.
I can tell you, Joe, that my twelve-year-old grandson Will was talking a storm up about how much he's looking forward to your camps.
Well, we're, it's in the works and it's, you know, it's planned, I just, you know, if, if we can't use the the R S U facilities, we'll have to, if we can, we'll use the, the, the fairgrounds, but that will require again, the goals and painting of the lines and so forth.
So why, the R S U, give your reason why they wouldn't allow you to use the facility?
It's just with the, the COVID protocol, protocol and their worries and, and to be honest with you, the the use that the high school fields are getting the last ten years, every year at the end of our soccer season, those fields are are ill-equipped to host, host games, they get so much used, Tim, and I, I just, we need, we need more facilities.
The governor lifts all the COVID restrictions by June or the end of June. They, they, have you got any sense from whether they'd allow those facilities?
I talked with Steve Bell three days ago and he said as of right now, he's not, he's it's unclear as to whether or not we'll be able to use them. And I, you know, I, I correspond with him quite a bit.
So I think that's something we need to get in front of the superintendent. Cause if we can't use those facilities for our semi-reck program, there's gonna be a lot of ruckus in the town about, and, and I can guarantee you, they'll have some problems.
Well, we need to come up with a plan, that's for sure.
So that's, that's something we need to go, we need to get other people involved besides him. So asking Linda to get in touch with the superintendent.
We'll also need to get in touch with our three representatives of the school board, because it's actually the school board that decided that no outside use of any school facility would occur. We were not allowed to use the kitchen as a lion's and a number of other groups that used different parts of the facilities over the past number of years, we're not able to do anything.
Well, these are students, we're not asking for outside people, these are students. In a summer program.
So I understand that, but I mean, I, I suppose that the R S U probably considers our recreation committee an outside user.
They may, but again, I think we need to press that.
It would be, there would be outside use when we have opponents coming in to play us at our
I understand that, when the school uses it, they have outside opponents from whatever school comes in, that's a, that's a that's just a ridiculous argument as far as I'm concerned, but we need to, we need to press that, please.
But, but once again, the, the purchase of the goals is, I, I really think it's, it's been long overdue. We've used, we've always used the high school equipment for all of rec. Whether it's basketballs, soccer ball, not soccer balls, soccer goals and the soccer fields. And the soccer fields have taken, that have had heavy use for a long time.
I would support you buying the goals, sure.
Thank you.
My only question for you is, I thought that there had been some discussion about the viability of the North Monmouth Beach and whether or not that that was gonna continue.
That's always been a concern of ours, you know, we have budgeted thirty-eight hundred dollars for that. There was very little use at the beach last year. And, you know, I think the committee would, would waver in, in favor of cutting ties with the North Monmouth Beach, but we wanna do what's best for majority of the people in the community.
Got a quick question for you, budget-wise, just your, your budget that was approved the last year and what you've expended so far, are you anticipating any carryforwards possibly because of the COVID and you were not able to use funds or?
Well, the, the only, the only concern we have is supplemental equipment, first aid, cleaning equipment, things of that nature. We don't really anticipate any, any, any curveballs at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I will say that I have had people mention from North Monmouth that they do appreciate that that beach is there and they're able to use it. Whether the use is enough or justified or not is another question, but I do know that there are people that use it and are interested in keeping it open.
So it's eight hundred dollars, Joe?
Thirty-eight.
Supplying the lifeguard, right?
Porta, port-a-potty lifeguards and just supplemental.
Be open regardless of whether or not the porta potty and the lifeguards are there, people could still use the beach.
No.
That I don't know, if, if
Because the beach hasn't belonged to us, it belongs
It's a private owner, but I mean, it would be up to them to, whether or not the beach is open. It just wouldn't be staffed by town personnel and have a porta potty for them, but they could still allow people to go there and use the beach.
I don't know if they would or not, you'd have to ask them, I guess.
Because last year you didn't have lifeguards there, correct?
We did not.
But people still use the beach.
It was used sparingly, from what I understand, yes.
Exactly, so that, that's, I guess that's what I was getting at, I mean, the beach was still being used, but not that, you know, thirty-eight hundred dollars is a big ordeal, but whether or not it's something that you're looking at money for this or that or playground equipment, you know.
One concern that we have is finding the, the appropriate, the qualified guard to work there. We don't wanna send an inexperienced guard there to work alone and finding, finding that right fit is a challenge.
Yeah, exactly, I think that's always been the hard part, is being able to staff that beach, so.
If we decide that we're not going to staff it, and we need to look at the agreement that we have with the association about how we would be able to break away from that. My one concern is I know that last summer we had an incident up there, because we didn't have anyone up there, lifeguards because of COVID. We had a bunch of needles and various things dumped all over the ground up there and our crew had to go up there and clean it up. If we break ties with them, then that takes our staff out of there and takes away our responsibility for taking care of the beach, we'll have to look at that agreement that we have with that association to see what are.
There is a clause there to get out of it with notice. We made sure that was in there.
Isn't there?
And I think that may be down to one person now, too.
Last I knew it was two, two people and a treasurer, there was still a couple of people, I think, because they're it's, it's a registered corporation with the state.
Tim, isn't there a date that if, if we were to pull out, we have to do it by a particular date? Tim, isn't there a date that if, if we were to pull out, we have to do it by a particular date?
Yes, you have to give them a certain amount of notice and it would have, I almost think it's nine days before the season's going to start, but I can't remember specifically.
I, I think if we look closely, I think there's a predetermined date that, that has been established.
I'll look at the contract, Joe, and see what it says.
Any other things for Joe?
Nope. Thank you for your work, Joe.
Well, you're welcome. I just hope, hope that things can return back to normal. Thank you.
Okay, on to, uh, the, uh, administration.
The administration budget, which is basically, um, all of the town office is up in overtime. Uh, most of that will be, um, because of elections. And wages are, wages and salaries are going to be down. Reason for that is because we had twenty-seven warrants this past year and then when Lori went to figure out the cola, um, I, I told her, you need to back it off a little bit because you need to take that twenty-seven warrant out of there. I'm getting more pay than I'm supposed to be getting, so that's why that's down. Um, wages for full-time are up twenty-four thousand, one hundred twelve dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, part of that is the cost of living increase, but the other part of that is that I'm asking to add an entry-level person at the front office who would work on the counter, uh, basic fifteen dollar an hour position. Uh, even though it looks like it's up, it really isn't because part of this budget when it goes on the warrant includes the code enforcement budget. So because of the changes in the code enforcement department and having gone to a part-time person, we have enough savings in the code enforcement budget and plus in our temporary budget, which we're eliminating to cover this, um, person, inter-level person. I had originally planned for the last twelve, fourteen months to think about, uh, asking you to hire a town clerk and take that off of me. Uh, so I can pay more attention to the town manager responsibilities. But having worked there, you know, for the last few months and rearranged some of the duties out front, we think it's more important that we have somebody who's designated to the counter. Will help free up some of the time with the person who's doing the warrants and, uh, the counts receivables and all of that. Have moved Lori out of the front office, as you all know. Lori is, uh, our H R person. She does all of our work with, uh, main municipal with our insurances. She's responsible for making sure that all of the trainings are happening at public works and, uh, our various keeping track of all of that stuff, getting harder and harder and harder for her to keep on top of all of that stuff. Um, she's also the contact person for like the dams and it's just, she can't do that and do the front office. So that was one of the reasons I took her out there, plus all of the H R work that she does. But we still have a third, a free person off the top front. So this is basically a, uh, expenditure neutral position. I'm asking that, uh, that you support that.
So this, 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 so the bottom line is there's no increase in the administration budget with adding this person.
Right.
That's all I need to hear. For my, my part.
Uh, our postage budget is up. That's because, uh, people ever since COVID started have been voting absentee. Uh, we're mailing out hundreds, if not thousands of absentee ballots now for the elections. And now that people have discovered absentee voting, who didn't use to vote absentee, the trend seems to be continuing. We had over, uh, almost four hundred absentee ballots just for this election, which is phenomenal because when I first came here, your biggest absentee turnout for the municipal election in June was twenty ballots. So that's how much this has all changed. I don't think it will ever go back to being twenty ballots for municipal election. I think people are going to continue. The budget, uh, is up for that. Legal is up. We have taken, we have a legal line of a thousand dollars in boards of committees and also code enforcement. We've combined that into this one line. So legal services are all in one place, which we did clarify that that is okay to have all of our funding in one place for legal services. We also upped it a little bit for those stray things that come up during the year that are not covered by our contract. So our trip attorney can come out of our trip funds, but anytime we have to use bond counsel on a project, we either need to make sure that the bond, uh, that we borrow is covering the bond counsel's fees or else, um, it's going to come out of this legal line. So we just bumped it up a little bit to secure it up. And that's basically it for administration.
Any questions? Thank you. Uh, on to assessing.
Assessing is only up about seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and that's just for our vision appraisal software, um, licensing. That's it. No other changes there.
Is that a, is that an increase that's going to be predictable for next year or is that just a?
You know, like the, the software staff. I, I'm not an expert on how software funds, but I think that they do tend to grow up on a regular basis, so.
They usually go up about three percent a year. Those software packages do. Is it an annual contract?
Yeah, I believe it is, yes. Most municipalities, well, I won't say most, but many, many municipalities use vision appraisal. It's a nice, uh, program. It's easy to use and people, the continuity from one community to another of using the same type of software makes it easier for the public to use it.
Thank you.
I will try ambulance services over to Mr. Kavinsky.
So I'll give you a couple of stats from last year. Two hundred and seventy-four responses, um, to the town last year. Some of those in conjunction with fire department, um, for more vehicle accidents. As you're probably well aware, um, this was probably, I'm not going to say probably, in, in third, almost thirty-six years ago, this was absolutely the most difficult year, uh, for EMS ever. Just the, the nature of calls, uh, the nature of the P B E required and everything else. The service invested, uh, north of about fifty thousand dollars in personal protective equipment. Um, that, uh, is being utilized on calls. Everything from positive air pressure respirators, um, gloves, to gowns, um, to cleaning materials, um, to atomizers. Uh, it's been pretty tough. Um, but I get the crew's credit. Uh, they did really great, uh, great work. They actually dropped their response time numbers to the town, um, almost over thirteen minutes last year, did about twelve and a half minutes this year. Uh, we've got a great, uh, great relationship with the fire department. We're very seamless, um, at, uh, every call and, uh, they've always been there and, uh, support us if, uh, basically anything. Return the favor. So those are kind of your response numbers, just, just in a very broad sketch. Um, obviously you're here tonight to talk about the budget, so you've got the figures in front of you. Uh, this is the second year of the three-year, uh, and you know, you've got your increase. It's the second year of the three-year, um, implementation, um, of, uh, the uncollectible, uh, bills formula. Um, then we're averaging, uh, service itself, um, is averaging right around, um, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those are bills from folks that either don't have insurance, uh, or don't have anywhere to pay. Um, and eventually walking, uh, we're going to build this stuff. As we did last year, we created a formula by which in six towns that we contract with, um, and what the liability with these uncollectibles from those towns were. Um, and identify the number, um, in uncollectible, uh, contributions, uh, that would be required from each town. To address that, um, and that, uh, um, is reflected in our budget for this year. Um, which will eventually, um, increase over a three-year period, um, will increase, um, contribution um, to the ambulance service each year by just about twenty thousand dollars, um, versus what it was um, from two or three years ago.
Uh, I got one question. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars in uncollectibles. Could you cover that again? Is that for your entire service or is that just for Monmouth? It doesn't seem like our demographics are that poor that you bring up there.
No, uh, the, uh, here. What we did was we took and we pulled everybody's, um, and Monmouth's, um, approximate, um, per year, um, is right around sixty-five thousand dollars.
In uncollectibles for Monmouth?
Yeah.
Everyone would have guessed.
I, you to be, I wouldn't have guessed it, I would, uh, yeah. And actually we did that, just so that you know, but we continue to do that. That was based on two-year study. Um, from, uh, April of eighteenth, um, to April of twentieth. Um, they gave some, um, some real good data. We continue to have those numbers in the sheet and continue to project them forward. At the end of the three-year period, we'll sit back and we'll look at that, at that again and make sure that those, that those proportions, um, stay accurate.
Do you have your own, own, um, follow-up for that or is it a, a third-party collection agency or what are you doing for?
Uh, currently the way that we bill, um, you probably don't know that one way. Um, we utilize, uh, medical reimbursement service, um, out of London. Um, that is our primary medical, uh, billing. Um, they will work a, uh, patient billing anywhere from, um, three months, um, to over a year. Um, depending upon, um, payment history and whatnot. Uh, we have an awful lot of folks, um, that we, uh, have on a, uh, monthly payment schedule of ten or fifteen or twenty dollars a month, Jordan, you know, whatever they can, whatever they can do. Um, you know, we work with them. The town does have a hardship policy by which we evaluate, um, those types of bills, um, and those types of situations. Our goal isn't to put anybody in the courthouse. We really don't want to send anybody to collections. You know, we have, um, certainly realized and especially now we realize that, um, you know, EMS is basically the frontline healthcare for, uh, a lot of folks. Um, you know, uh, we saw revenue dip last year. We're going to see slight revenue dip this year. We're seeing an awful lot of people wanting EMS to show up. We do an awful lot of evaluations, work them up, you know, twelve weeks. Um, you know, just everything that we do with all the equipment that we have. Um, these are folks who right now just, um, have absolutely no interest in transporting to a hospital due to the COVID, um, type situation, so. Uh, we're, we're very sensitive to that. So after that period, though, which medical reimbursement works on those cases, then they're sent to us for review, um, and anything that is deemed, um, that we haven't received hardship, um, the best for anything that we haven't, um, been tracking on books for, then we utilize, uh, Tom's agency, um, for collections.
And, and what's your anticipated, uh, collection? Five percent, ten percent?
Oh goodness, um, our collection is, is right around four percent per year. It's, it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
Um, it's bad. I mean, if, if people aren't going to pay the bills, they're not, you know.
Are you using the bundling option now and you're, and you're billing out for your A L S, B L S calls? Is it, is it more of a bundling or is it still like a line item? That was something that was.
No, I mean, most, most everything now is, um, bundled up. And that was a result, that was a result of, uh, changes that Medicare made several years ago, um, where it used to be that you could, um, you know, you could bill for base rate, then you could bill for items.
Right, right.
You just, you can't do that anymore.
So has that helped you or has that made it?
Um. I say it's a wash in the end. Um, in, in the end, it's probably a wash. Now what folks will see when they get their bill is either a rate for advanced life support transport or basic life support transport and then mileage. So, um, so what we're doing, I think, actually I missed one, um, just a minute ago. Um, the average uncollectible, like, in Monmouth is about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. I was looking, I was trying to remember upside down.
Okay, well, that's, that sounds.
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit better.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, I, I, yeah.
You know, and, and if you want to extrapolate that, um, you can figure out that.
That's a little bit more man.
Yeah, it is, yes. Um, and you figure that, uh, at that rate, um, you know, keep in mind you're probably billing on average about eleven hundred dollars a call, something like that. So you can, you can do the math there. You can divide the thirty-five thousand by eleven hundred, you can just about figure out how many. There was, uh, per year.
I have a question just because I've never listened to one of these before and tried to wrap my head around it. So, so if an accident happens in Monmouth, you respond to Monmouth, but the person in the car is injured is from Gardner. It still goes on Monmouth's co, um, uncollectibles if they don't pay their bill or how does that all, how does that all come about? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Yeah.
That was, that was our worst, you know.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So.
It's a good question.
No, we actually, uh, when, uh, we have our building service, um, identify our uncollectibles, um, they're done by the, um, agent's, uh, president.
Yes.
Um, so if we have somebody from Gardner that we pick up here, um, that does not count towards.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to try to understand. I wanted to see. I don't want to be responsible for somebody from Gardner. Or New York City. I'll pay my own fee.
So obviously they're, you know, pandemic, um, you know, there have been significant changes.
Yes.
But, um, when you really get down into these and you start to dwell into these, um, and, um, over the last year, uh, either myself or the deputy, we've had a supervisory presence on, on yearly every call um, that we go to, um, because we have been, I know, kind of supervising, uh, the crews, making sure that P B E standards and that and whatnot. Um, you know, one of the things that we, we really discovered is that, you know, a lot of this is, is, uh, in and out of the, the handles. This is, is, we see this.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, you know, that, but, but that's all, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you.
What I can tell you is, um, just as a, I think, just took delivery of our, uh, new chassis truck. Um, so we sent, uh, one of our trucks out to, our two thousand and twelve, sent up a new chassis. Basically they picked the box up, get the old chassis out from underneath, uh, deciding chassis and put the box back online. Um, so that brings up, uh, back up to four functional ambulances. Um, and the way we've been staffing, um, you know, Monday through Friday, we go staff three trucks during the day. Um, and at night, uh, we've got to be staffed through trucks. So probably it's worked out quite, quite well.
So that was yesterday. You picked up that new truck, right?
Yeah, actually we got it, uh, we got it delivered.
So I won't tell you they were going faster than twenty-five on Maple Street because I was at the end of my driveway when that truck went by my house. Yesterday morning. Well, it was the, the, it was the pickup truck thing, the emergency response number ten or something that.
Yeah, car ten, that's, yeah, that's the, that's the supervisor's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the supervisor's vehicle. Probably had just left, uh, one of the trucks off of service and was trying to, trying to get to another call.
No, there were no lights running on it.
Yeah, we don't, we, we try and that's one of the things, that's one of the things we try and do. We, we utilize, uh, thanks to the P S A, we utilize something called emergency medical dispatch. Um, and we have a lot of calls where, um, we, we get codes, um, for the calls and basically it's Alpha, Beta, Delta, Charlie, Echo, um, and based on those, um, we alter our responses. Um, so there are a lot of callers um, that we will go to, that we know one or one wants to sign us to, um, just for a lot of issues, so.
It's something I bring up every meeting, so.
What, what license level are you running at right now?
Uh, we are licensed and basic permit.
Permitted to a paramedic. So there's, there's not a guarantee you're going to get a paramedic on every call?
Uh, our staffing model is to staff paramedics on all trucks. I just don't need to, I, I don't, I don't need to state a name and tell them to, to do that, so. Um, and again, it gives us options. I wind up with three ambulances out there on two oh two and we're at a car wreck and I've got all three ambulances out there and I've got two walking wounded to be transported and I've got one major trauma. I can pull a paramedic out one truck and put in another paramedic on another truck. That other truck is allowed to burn, transported to the basic level without me having to have a paramedic drive that from the hospital. So that's why we, we use it for flexibility.
That's right.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, next is, uh, Tim, where he benefits?
Hopefully benefits covers everything from health insurance to retirement systems, unemployment. Medicare, our Medicare contribution, social security contribution is up mostly because of health insurance increases.
What was the percentage increase this year?
I don't have the percentage increase in front of me, but, uh, it went up about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, in years past, usually the, they, you know, we were told that, you know, the rates weren't up three percent, five percent, eleven percent.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of an indicator of the economy and where things are going. It's helpful.
Yeah.
I don't think there was an increase in the single plan. I think the family plan was the one that went up substantially.
That's employee benefits.
General assistance?
General assistance is no change. None at all.
Risk management?
Risk management is down about forty-four hundred dollars. That covers worker's compensation and general liability insurance.
Special projects?
Okay, special projects. So, at the top of your, uh, French out, you have all of the special projects that you have been funding for the last few years, and for which we continue to get requests. And some of those have really not changed, but down at the bottom, we do have two new requests. One is for sexual assault prices and support for one thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars seventy-five cents. Strange figure, but, and the children's center for two thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. I have not said yes or no to those two projects, um, because that's your decision whether you want to add them to this list. But I did want to include them so that you would know that they have been requested. So, if you want to add those, that will increase this budget about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred dollars. Up to you.
So, what is the children's center?
And I, well, let's see, no, I don't have the letters with me. I can get you more information about that before we finalize the.
That would be great, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Howard Clark?
Now, Clark is another one that's basically up, uh, in the overtime section because of the number of absentees that we're dealing with. We, because of COVID, have had to open up on Fridays from one to five and let voters vote in person absentee. So, that requires at least two of us to be there. I've been, um, last election, because it was such a big election, everyone was in the front office. And the bigger elections, everyone in the front office will be there. Obviously, I'm salary, so I don't, uh, cost you any extra money. Uh, also, because of the increase in minimum wage in January, our election clerks are now making, uh, twelve fifteen now instead of twelve dollars now. So, basically, that's it.
Uh, next, treasurer?
Treasurer is down eight hundred dollars. These are, uh, banking fees, our payroll billing, we have been receiving thank you, uh, payroll for us. And our auditors are in here. We're hoping that maybe the auditor cost will go down, but we don't dare make that adjustment just yet. In the past, we had a pre-audit done by someone totally different from, uh, RKO, our auditors. And that helps the previous person doing the books, uh, get ready for the audit. Uh, most communities don't do that. So, I'm thinking that this is probably going to be going down, at least in the next budget, if not this one. We just don't know until we, we've experienced deal about that portion. But for now, it's down eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Unclassified?
Okay, so unclassified is your usual list of requests, uh, for milk oil removal and boat inspections. Last year, you cut five thousand dollars from this budget because there was a new request for five thousand dollars. And I believe that it was the same one from the Friends of the Cobbsy Watershed. And that was for, uh, removal of invasive variable leaf water milk oil from Annabessacook Lake. But we also already are funding, um, fifteen hundred dollars to Annabessacook Lake Improvement Association. Five hundred dollars of that is going for this very, very purpose. So, last year, you cut five thousand dollars out of this budget, and this budget is up five thousand dollars with that new request in there, so.
I'm not in favor of honoring that request. I'm in favor of cutting that five thousand dollars, but I can use the boardroom again and we'll talk.
How does everybody else feel about cutting that back, saying no?
No, I think it needs to be there, personally. As a trustee of the Cobbsy Watershed district.
I'm not in favor.
So, so we're talking about the five thousand dollar, let me just wrap my head around this. You look down below. Yeah, the five thousand there. And so, they're already, Annabessacook pays five hundred to this, is that what you've said?
So, there's a fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, which is above there, yeah?
Which has five hundred dollars in it for that.
Going towards milk oil.
Right.
And I know that obviously, it's already been found in, in Annabessacook.
On both sides of the bridge.
On, yeah, and they're using the boat landing at the KOA, correct?
Right.
And that's the only.
Augusta West.
Okay.
If I might, you know.
Yeah, the KOA at Augusta West, or it's okay, it, it used to be, didn't it?
No.
So, sorry, I'm going back in time, so.
Chris, I might interrupt. They were supposed to do some kind of, uh, chemical treatment in Annabessacook, uh, last fall. Yeah, uh, I, it might be very informative for us at our next meeting to find out which results of that was.
I, I, my concern is knowing how, you know, jug stream is just across that point from, from where it was found, and Cobbsy being such a, a big, uh, part of that.
Yeah.
Um, and then from Cobbsy to the next, to the next, to the next.
Well, just to follow that logic, the, it's been in Annabessacook for a long, long time. It's also been in Cobbsy Street for a long, long time. Was a bomb for a long, long time. So, I don't really buy into the, the, uh, mobility that they're talking about. I just don't, I personally don't think that that's five thousand dollars we should be spending right now. Given, especially given the fact we can't use, really can't comfortably use the light. But anyway, that's just me.
So, Lynda, you're saying you could get us some more information on the, what the disposition is of the chemical treatment?
I can ask, yes, I'll find out about that.
You know, it's been a favorable.
Really?
What I heard, yeah.
And then, the five thousand, that's a negotiated amount, or you could say, well, we can't do that, but we can do this? I mean, are.
The select board can, you can either say, we'll give it all, we'll give none, or we will give you X amount.
So, once we know, then I guess that's something I'd like to revisit that number, once we know.
It's not a negotiated amount, it's their additional request.
That's their request, but we don't have to give them their request. We can say, you can have X instead of A, so.
I will find out if there's also a beginning of a check in, and I will let you know in our next meeting.
My other question before we go on is, uh, why the fifteen hundred dollar expenditure on Woodbury Pond? Is that a one-time thing? Or, uh, should we be, uh, should the budget be fifteen hundred dollars instead of five hundred?
It's the dam.
No, the fifteen hundred dollars, for some strange reason, the five hundred from one year didn't get paid out, and it got paid out, um. It all got paid out this past year. And the money was there, it was appropriated, but it just didn't get paid out. So, that's why it looks like it was a lot more paid out this year.
Exactly. Yeah, because if there were eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty never were paid, so that was twenty twenty-four.
The last thing is revenue.
Okay, so, revenues at this point, with what you're looking at in front of you, are down one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred forty-six with a big but. I have put in their, um, revenue sharing figures based on last year's number, because this year's have not come out yet. Last year, uh, if you remember, we had one number in there that was projected for this upcoming year, and then COVID hit and they got adjusted down. Then I came back to you, we adjusted it to the year before, just to be on the safe side, because we didn't want to overestimate. And then they came back with fifty-five thousand dollars more than we had expected, which was a good thing. But we have, we don't know the revenue sharing figures yet for this year, and I keep looking on the site to see if they come out yet. Usually, one of the managers will send out an email the minute they pop up on the site and let us all know that they're there. But I've been going in every day and checking, and they haven't posted them yet. So, this number could change, could go up, could, I guess it could go down, I'm hoping it doesn't. But for now, that's what I've got based, um. We also were told to use, uh, local road assistance money at the current level for now, because those numbers have also not come out. So, between now and the time you sign the warrant, these numbers may go in a different direction, hopefully. So, then I have, um, we gave you the budget summary with your packet that shows you the overall budget and what the impact gave at this point. Uh, I have some things that I'd like to ask you to consider tonight, but I want to look at the budget summary. The bottom line makes it look like that this budget expenditures are up two hundred twelve thousand three hundred ninety dollars and seventy-seven cents. However, they're not, because we're going to back out of that, the payments for Packard Gilman, uh, because we have that savings from the project. So, we're backing out one hundred thirteen thousand five hundred sixteen dollars fifty-eight cents, which leaves the budget up ninety-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents. So, um, and then we.
Little shy of a quarter of a mil.
And we're, you know, some of these numbers, Keats Door is in here, it's already in his budget for next year. So, that's not anything that we're anticipating adding. The only thing that, uh, is not covered in the budget summary is the ten thousand dollars that you set aside for the senior program. So, that would add another, uh, ten thousand dollars to that. And then, obviously, the county, the RSU, and the Cobbsy Watershed, we don't have those figures in here yet, but those don't, usually don't win this budget. But I just wanted to point that out to you, in case you looked at the bottom line there and saw the increase and, and were bothered by that.
And what's the current, uh, paving budget?
The current what?
Current paving budget.
I'm getting to that, that's coming up. So, um, a couple of things we need to decide, as we need to decide as a board, and I had mentioned this to you in one of my newsletters. So, they, you have been charging late, uh, interest on late taxes at seven percent, and this actually goes on the warrant. That is because the state set the interest rate at five percent, but it allows municipalities to charge another two percent, up to a two percent. And Monmouth has chosen to charge that whole seven percent. Now, the state has dropped the interest rate at the state level to four percent, and you can add the extra two onto that and set the interest rate at six percent. But it's up to you, because you can set that interest rate anywhere between four and six percent on late taxes, and I need to know what you want me to put on the warrant.
I'd move for five. That's the number I was looking at.
I'm not opposed to that. But, Linda, for, for that debt, just before we get too far in this, um, what do we have outstanding for uncollected, uh, property tax? It was fairly substantial.
It was substantial, uh, and funny, I was going to mention that to you this week in my newsletter, that I would like to schedule a discussion on it, and have it on the agenda soon. And also have our attorney zoom into that. Last I knew, it was about four hundred thousand dollars that was unpaid in taxes.
And what, what percentage is that? Is that, uh, less than ninety percent collected?
I don't believe it is less than ninety percent, because when we did our bond bank application, and I looked back at our percentages, Kurt's numbers, it was like ninety-seven percent, ninety-eight percent collected, something like that. So, but it's not good. And we have, you know, some people who owe many, many years. Now, today, I found out, because this, some of this stuff is not something that I'm very experienced at, so I'm learning along the way. You can't go back more than eight years in collecting, because of the statute of limitations. So, there's a cutoff there. We need to take a serious look at that. And I know no one wants to kick anyone out of their houses. So, we have, we actually own these properties. We have automatically foreclosed on them, which is a process. But we have never kicked anyone out of their property, so we have not taken physical possession. But we also have some vacant land on that list. There, nobody's going to get hurt if you decide that you want to put that up for auction or bid or whatever. My understanding from talking to Kimberly today was that it was about five years ago that you last did any kind of sale of property.
That's what we've normally done in the past, prepare a list of, uh, vacant properties, and let's start going through the procedure, because that would have to be, uh, I don't, I can't remember, do we have to put a question on the warrant to sell those? I don't think we do.
No, you already have one.
I think we just have to hold a public auction.
Yeah, you already have one on that.
So, yeah, I mean, we've normally done that. We just don't want to kick people out of their homes.
Well, to, to a point, because, you know, I, I understand what Tim's saying, but that, that balance, that burden goes to other people that are already struggling. So, you gotta look at the bigger picture on this thing, too. It's not just this person's getting kicked out of their home, because this person is in pain, it's putting a burden on other people that are probably already stretched really thin. So, I think that needs to be addressed, if we're gonna look at this, you know, this thing globally. It's not just the one person, the domino effect of this is, can be fairly severe, so. You know, my heart goes out to them, I don't know, you know, some people just have bad circumstances, and some people just make some poor life decisions. But that should not, that should not be incumbent upon the people that are already eking out a living to support that. So, I, I hope that that message gets through to a few people.
We have had in the, in the past, people that have, uh, owed back taxes that have, that have come to us and asked for consideration, and they've detailed their circumstance, what they can pay, they make a good pay effort to pay something, and we, and we, we mitigate the circumstance, we, you know, we may forgive part of the bill or put reasonable terms on. So, I, I think it's more about, to your point, there has to be a stick or nobody pays taxes.
Absolutely.
But we also have to be compassionate, so.
Yeah.
People need to understand, you're in, you're in trouble, this is a potential consequence, you need to come talk with us.
I, I have one, uh, property owner right now who is doing her darndest to figure out a way to pay her taxes.
And those are the people we should be working with the most, for the hardest, yeah.
We have been, we, we've had a conversation with our attorney, uh, and we're doing everything that we possibly can, and she's not giving up. I mean, when she's, somebody tells her no, she just keeps going to the next place. We have people like that, but then you have people who know that other people are not paying their taxes, and they don't feel that that's fair, so it's.
And it, it's a snowball, look back to the side, arrow itself.
So, we good with the five percent? Okay, uh, moving on to pay a payment. And now that there was some, uh, we had some conversation at the last, um, when we were talking about Public Works, the fact that we did put back fifty thousand dollars into the paving budget that originally was two hundred thousand before COVID. Uh, Keek has gone out and got some prices to do the two roads that he feels need to be done, and that's Long Road and Pine Hill Road. And, uh, for the hot pot mix, and Keek can talk about this, it's one eighty-two, one forty-seven. So, that brings us pretty, pretty close to the two hundred thousand that we need in that budget. And still have some money left over for other things that come up throughout the year, the Public Works comes up again. That's regular hot pot mix, Keek's check is about twenty to thirty year lifespan, as opposed to doing chip seal, which was.
Ten and fifteen.
Yeah.
It's not good with hot, uh, with high traffic, either, the chip seal.
The heavy truck drive is for that.
Well, Wardo, neither one of those roads see truck traffic, really.
Well, well, I'm just thinking, here is now, you know, it's not harm.
A water road?
On, no, on Pine.
Pine Hill Road.
Back and way.
Well, my concern is, is, uh, uh, like the Cressy Road and the Cemetery Road, what are we ever gonna do about those?
What do you want to do with them? You want to save them? I mean, it's wondering how.
I understand that, but I mean, this is, we keep picking the can down the road every year. Can we, can we pay part of the Cressy Road, the first section, like I talked about, that's in, uh, has a relatively good base by the fork, by the farm, Lightmore Farm? At least let the people on that road see we're doing something for them.
I, I just believe that there are roads that are bad now, a lot of them, maintain before you add more to it.
The, the others, we talked last, I mean, we, three years ago now, when we, when we approved sending the question out for Gilman and Packard, we said that as soon as we get that bond paid off, we needed to bring this, you know, another bond up for consideration for the next two roads. And I know Cressy was one of those roads that was prime on the list, so, I mean.
And you're referring to a total rebuild, too, right?
Yeah, well, I'm referring to what we did to Packard and to Gilman, to put them in a condition to where you. I'm referring to what we did to Packer and to Gilman to put them in a condition where you could pave them and expect a ten to twelve year life, you know, life expectancy from the hot top. I mean, you don't get more than ten to twelve years off any road, no matter what the basis is, before you have to resurface. So, I, I personally agree that Warren and Pine Hill, how much, how many miles of road is this for?
Well, here, take your, take a note that. You can answer stuff like that, more than one copy.
So what you want, you want to do some paving on Cressy Road?
Well, I think that section, I think that, yeah, I would rather put off the Warren Road for a year, but.
The Cressy Road is going to cost a lot more to do.
Cressy Road is going to cost a lot more to do.
I understand that, but the section, again, the section going from Route two oh two to the end of the property line of Highmore Farm is in very good shape. Good drainage, good base, and it looks good. I mean, you, you'd be a better judge of that than I would, of course, but, you know, further down, you know, we're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to put some gravel or something in there, some stone or something. Because, I, I mean, every spring that just turns into, you know, six, eight inch deep ruts and people can't even pass through it.
That has gone to all the drainage, it's wet right there, it's always.
Yeah, through that section, it's terrible.
Gilman Road, that's already doing that.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think we can ignore these people any longer.
I'm pretty happy, I've been great, they call and thank me every now and then. I don't think we have the money to do it.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
The wide road is, what a ditch.
Yeah, and I asked Keith to, months ago, actually, when he came on, to take a really good look around, and, and we do trust his judgment on those roads. And I know you all are out there and you're driving around and thanks for the tour. Now, I know why some of these roads are what they're like, too, but, you know, we, we only have so much money in the country.
Right, and some of these roads are so bad, it's the old putting lipstick on a pig because it's just not going to hold up, like we talked about Pine Hill. It's just the base of it is gone, so if we do that and don't pave Warren and keep the hot top on it in good shape, we're just going to be wrecking another road that's already, that's in good shape. So it's, we have to, you know, defer to your judgment on.
I think we need to catch up on what we have.
Exactly.
Yeah, because eventually, we're going to have to bond for Cressy. Now, I do think, I ask your opinion on that, that as we're able, we should do as much of the prep work on Cressy's. We, we should improve the ditching, improve the base wherever we can. And, and so that when the time comes that we are ready to do the paving, that a lot of that prep work is already done.
Well, can, do we, do we need to put some extra money in the road budget to do that drainage and ditching on Cressy?
Well, I put in for an escrow.
Yeah, we'll talk about the expenditure in a minute.
I mean, unless you want us to contract it.
But I, I think we need to add the fifty thousand back into the paving budget if you're all good with that, so we can get these two roads taken care of. And then make sure that Public Works has got an adequate paving budget for the rest of the year, for whatever might pop up. And things pop up, or drop down.
Yeah.
Good with that?
But I think.
What does that put it up to?
The Public Works budget?
If you put an extra fifty in, what does it put up to?
Two hundred thousand, which is where it was before COVID.
That's where it was, twelve years ago. That's the entire loss left for that.
And, and obviously, Public Works uses a lot of money paving roads, but you got to cut it off somewhere. Are you all right putting it back up to two hundred?
Yes.
But you were saying about Pine Hill Road, I think, that it started tonight, that the biggest problem with that is that needs to be ditched, you know? And then you had talked with Kirby about it, because my question two weeks ago to you, when, when we launched. It's the fact that, yeah, what's underneath there, I mean, if we grow rocks, yes. Yeah. Yeah. And, and that's main, and that's main, when you, every year, there's new rocks in the garden that you never saw last year. Because they grow, because they're pushed up by frost. So, you know, whatever needs to be done for the base work to hopefully keep this going, I mean, I don't think, you know.
You have to mill it all up, dig it too deep, which they've done.
Yeah.
So you know it's good material.
Yeah.
It looks bad right now because it's frost.
Yes, and everything.
But it's, it's swamp, it's a, it's a, it's a hill and it's a swamp.
Yes.
So the swamp, so it's right, the swamp will always heat.
Yes.
You can't stop that, so.
No. And.
Get ten years out of it.
Yeah.
Agreed that, you know, it needs to be ditched.
Yeah. Exactly.
Just like a lot of these dirt roads are going to patch.
Yeah. The water has nowhere to go.
But even, even on Pine Hill, even if you ditched it, even if you made a, if you did the perfect ditching, the water still has no place to go.
Right.
Because there's no flow, there's no, it's a swamp.
So good on paving?
Yeah.
All right, so while, while we're talking about ditching, Tim had mentioned to me that he might want to cut the mini excavator out of this budget. The mini excavator and the Public Works plow truck are not, the, the first payment are not in this next budget. They will be in the FY twenty-three budget. The cost of the mini excavator is twenty-four thousand dollars a year to own it. Keith and I worked out the numbers on how many days and how many months he needs to use an excavator to do a proper job in town. And it will cost him fourteen thousand dollars plus to rent one. So does it make sense to cut that excavator out of there for ten thousand dollars when we'll be owning it and he'll have it as his, at his disposal? Disposal whenever he needs to do lifting jobs and other uses of the excavator.
What are we going to do with the old back, are we selling it?
Yeah, whatever.
It's in bad shape, it's bad shape, it's dangerous.
They will, one place would take a trade at sixty-two hundred.
How much?
Sixty-two hundred.
Sixty-two?
Yeah.
So, well, my only comment on that is that be prepared next year to lose something if the finances warrant it, right? I have no problem with, with being on board with the excavator and the truck because it doesn't impact this budget. But just understand from my point of view, that if things don't, if things warrant it next year, then in order to keep it, you may lose something else.
And just a reminder from our last budget talks, when we were talking about, when I laid out the entire sheet of everything that we owed. We will have seventeen thousand three hundred seventeen dollars expiring in debt in that following budget. So basically, you're talking seven thousand dollars.
And that was, yeah, I remember that conversation, because when that came up, we were looking at what that service was clearing and it was sort of a can't float out.
There's more and more demands for them to do work that requires this mini excavator. And we want to give them the tools that they need to get the job done for the town.
Do you have a trailer to transport it?
I don't know if I do that.
I think you did, yeah, I believe that the trailer is, is part of that budget. Yeah, we can look again.
So the transport trailer for the excavators included in the total price of roughly seventy-five?
You, you want to take, take and put the backhoe loader up for bid?
You think we'd get more money if we?
I put it up for bid, you don't have to take any of the bids.
Yeah.
Right, you don't have, right, somebody didn't set a price.
We can set a deadline and set a price on it.
Before you pull the trigger.
You'd do better than you would on a trade. Potentially, but like Tim said, you don't have to accept any, right?
Yeah. I'm not for that, I think it's much better to own something and have something to trade when the time comes than to have nothing to show for it by renting something, so. Totally makes sense.
Just a couple more things, we, at the last meeting, Kristen had asked to have a couple of flashing speed signs. And we've got the price, Chief O'Hara reached out and got prices for those. They're about eleven hundred dollars a piece, so that we would put one down by the twenty, twenty-five mile an hour sign on one thirty-two. As you're coming in from two oh two, and another one at the other end where it drops to twenty-five, and put the two signs there. We have the posts, so we don't need to worry about that. But I just want to make sure that everybody's good with that, we'll put it in the budget, we can put it in the Public Works budget if everybody's good with that.
I think that's fine.
We will make sure, I mean, obviously, the twenty-five mile an hour sign, before you get to the town office, as you're coming in two oh two, it's not an issue as far as sidewalks. But as we're looking at doing that sidewalk project downtown, we want to make sure we're not doing anything down the river. Putting something in concrete and then tearing it back up again, or putting the sidewalks in and then ripping them back up again, so we'll time, it may be a little wait on it.
Well, as long as we have a plan for it, and I think that we look at the roads coming onto Main Street, you know, as we, I talked about Maple Street, Blue Road, Pleasant Street. Those are the big ones coming into the twenty-five mile an hour zone that nobody pays attention to. And then we start with Main Street, which is the complaints I heard today when I was out walking from folks. And then, then we start looking at the other, other two roads. I don't, I don't think that, what's the name of the, across from the town office, Dairy Road? I don't, I don't think that it's a huge deal because if you hit those railroad tracks going faster than twenty-five, you can lose your exhaust pipe, speaking from experience, so. It wasn't me driving, though, I was in the vehicle.
Okay, but just tell people that there's a plan in place.
Yes, and I think, you know, if we start kicking away at those, but I think that probably Blue Road and Maple Street and Pleasant Street are the, the biggest speed ones, especially coming up. You know, if we think to do these each year and check them off our list.
Oh, should we do three signs instead of two?
Where would we put the third one?
Well, I know what I'm saying, but, you know, I don't want to sound self-serving, you know?
I thought we were talking about Blue Road.
Maple Street.
Maple Street and, and the twenty-five mile sign up there by Stevens Farm.
Yeah, so it's going to be on two on, two on Main Street.
The one down by Jesse's house.
And then the one, it'd be down on the flats, actually, so.
What does Chief O'Hara think, I mean, what's, is he still on?
Well, Chief.
He's there, I see him.
Yeah, he's.
He's hiding.
It's like he's lurking in the shadows or something.
Kevin did a study last summer, I believe it was, Kevin, you can talk about that and what his numbers found. That it didn't really justify doing anything downtown, but that's not what Kristen is hearing from people, so, Kevin?
Because the sign is there, they slow down.
Well, yeah, the sign is there, but they also, it also picks up them before they realize the sign is there, you know what I'm saying?
How far out does it pick them up?
Quarter mile.
Well, I, I'll bring you to walk with me tomorrow, it's supposed to be a beautiful day, you can come right along with me tomorrow, so.
All right, what time?
Well, it varies depending on what, how, my phone is busy, but you could come sit in my driveway in the morning at around seven on Maple Street. And, and pick them off like fleas down there.
We can talk about this to death, but I don't think two or three signs is a terribly big expense.
No.
And the flashing lights on the signs do get people's attention. I know that when I'm in Auburn and other places and we see them, we do slow down when we're driving. I think they would be effective whether or not the study says they would be, I suppose. So I, I have no trouble with doing two or three, my question is, do we want to do two or three?
Yeah.
So where's everybody, two or three?
Three. I don't know. Main, Main Street to Maple Street.
Thank you.
Well, you got three people that say three, so we'll figure out.
All right, same here, we'll change that. Last thing, I've got, you know, at the home, we're still working on the final numbers for the streaming equipment. We think we narrowed it down, we're not going to go with the forty-nine hundred dollar speakers at Dennis, not speakers, but cameras that Dennis had found. We'll go with something less, but I still don't have that final number for you, for us to plug in the CIP, I will have it before you get to that point.
Right.
We're working on it, but this seems to work. And I think, I don't know what everyone thinks tonight, I think maybe we need an additional speaker on our TV so we can hear people better, but.
A bigger TV will have better speakers, it's not a big.
Or you could put an external speaker on it.
Yeah, exactly. That's all I've got, thank you so much.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask you to consider whoever's going to come up with the warrant article for the middle school. To consider that we do two questions, one is whatever you're going to propose. And then the second question is, if question, whatever it is fails, do you favor spending whatever it is to demolish? Four fifty-two to demolish.
Can I, can I just jump in on that? So we don't do two questions, I talked to the company that does the ballot, and they said they will set it up like a campaign. So you have to vote for not more than one. So the first one would be whatever the question is, and then the other option would be demolishing everything. But it's vote, vote, just like if it was a race for office, that's how they have to set it up.
Okay.
Otherwise, you run the risk of having two questions fail and then we're.
Right.
You have to do it so that they have to make a choice, one or the other.
As far as me, I just want to make sure they're the choice.
And I would also urge that we make it clear to the people who are voting on this question, that whatever the cost is you put in that first question, that only be the first part. And eventually, it may cost up to one point seven million dollars. We need to be honest with, with the public, so they know exactly what they're voting on.
Well, there's only so much we can say about that. I will tell you that I have gotten some complaints today, and I got one yesterday, that people didn't understand the moratorium question. So, I mean, that was posted all over town, and we post all over Warren.
The problem that I see with people's understanding was, they didn't, they didn't, and it's not a question of how, it's not a matter of how the question was pitched. The question was, do you favor imposing a moratorium or not? Not, do you favor the project or not?
Yeah.
And people got.
People got confused and thought it was approval or not approval of the project.
But the questions that we got during the absentee period were either, you know, that, or what does this mean, why do we need it? In which case, we would say, I'm sorry, we can't answer that question. We can tell you what yes means and what no means, but we can't get into the specifics of it because that's, that's not our role.
Well, there was articles written that I think that caused a lot of, saying that the moratorium was going to kill, was, would kill the project, and that was never the spirit intent. And I don't know how many times I've gone through that and it just didn't resonate.
Well, the call I got yesterday while I was at the polling place was from a woman who, she and her husband voted, they figured it out eventually that they had voted in opposite, the opposite way that they intended to vote. So they couldn't figure out the question. And for me, it's like, we've done everything we possibly could to help people understand the question, and the question was pretty simple. But we can say, when we're sitting here, when we're talking about getting the word out to people about what a question says and what it does. But we're still going to have some people, I think, in the end, who will say, I didn't, I didn't understand.
That happens with every question at every level.
Yes.
And it's, we had, you know, ballot, I mean, these things sent out by the developer. I, I think it really, really muddied the waters big time.
Yeah.
And it was.
Just for everyone's information, any town that has less than fifteen thousand people and it does not have to adhere to the Maine Ethics Commission or state statutes regarding disclosure. So that did not, that was, it was not required that whoever sent that out identified themselves, and they did not.
Well, with that, I hope we adjourn.
You can assume it was Tim, but.
Says him right there, your name right there.
I'll second major.
All of your favor.
I don't think it says anywhere on it.